Okay, we have a little reverb and we're gonna try to fix that before we start.
Did you start recording as well at the same time?
Did you mute?
Yes. Are both of the, it looks like both of the town cameras are not.
The audience is not, does not have its audio turned on.
Oh.
Let's see. I don't hear as much. You in that?
It should be.
It's, it's definitely better because I can hear myself speaking on your. Okay.
Thanks.
Alright, so I'd like to call the Dover special meeting to order at two oh five PM on Friday, December fifteenth. This meeting is to discuss capital budgets and general budget review. So. Travis, talk to us about paving, which is the first thing on the agenda.
Okay. Um. I don't have the, who was in here before, but I have my updated list that I'd like to do this upcoming year.
For the twenty-four, twenty-five?
Twenty-four, twenty-five, yep. Um. Like to do a hint, some, an inch and a half on Handle Road. From Tannery Road to where, straight through to where it meets. Uh, the North Access Road. And then like the page of the North Access Road from. That conjoining intersection where it meets Handle Road down to the parking lot at Mount Snow. Um, and then go around the Snow Vita Loop, which hasn't been done in a number of years, as you can see.
I think we've had complaints about that.
We were, yeah, I, I've updated the last work list on this too.
I see.
From what you guys had previously had.
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Um. And then I'd like to, I'd like to do. Goose City needs an overlay. It's been quite a few number of years since Goose City has seen an overlay. And then I was curious about doing. Point six miles more on Blue Brook. I've had a lot of interest from a lot of residents up there. Wanting to know when and if we are gonna continue on through, so. I have put in for, put in for that.
And.
And that's three thousand one hundred and sixty-eight feet.
And so the total.
The total, the total is five hundred thousand. Six, five sixty-four.
As a guesstimate.
Yes, that's estimated at a hundred and five per ton. And.
Did we pay this year?
It, it went up, um, I believe, I believe it went up to like ninety-two.
Okay, so that gets.
From, from the bid price. Yeah, I added, yes. Yep. Even if, I did the figures, even if it went up to a hundred and ten, it would only put you at like five ninety.
Okay, so you're six.
Yeah, just so you know.
Okay.
With, with what I currently wanna do.
You're standing.
Yep.
Okay. Um.
And that's no milling, no, no grinding.
So really quick and.
Yep, quick and easy overlay and then. Continue some more on Blue Brook, that's just base and top. Three inches of base, an inch of top. Same thing we did when we went up past two and Ben's dollars.
And none of Goose City will be potentially impacted by the digging of.
No, 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 they're gonna, they're doing overhead from Holland Road. And then up onto Gina's, the Locust Heights, and it'll start there, the underground.
Okay.
Yeah, it won't be.
Okay, I certainly don't think that we wanna add brand new pavement.
I've already.
Okay.
Yep.
Let's take.
They've, they've got new stakes in the ground out through.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so, uh, just for latecomers, we have. Travis has presented his capital paging paving budget and wish list of where to pay. A lot of it is overlayment, none of it is, is reclaiming or terrifying.
Yep.
Um, and, and there is some from scratch, another point six miles on Blue Brook.
Yep. However, I would like to see if we can pump the paving budget to six fifty, if possible. I know it was six fifty a number of years ago, but.
And why?
I, and I feel that, you know, to continue on. In the years coming. If we bump it up now, we'll, we would be in good shape.
So this is prepping for the future?
Yes, yes, because as you can see, my number is back down under six hundred, but. I, I feel like, if we.
So your ask is for six fifty?
Yeah, yeah, it's, see it, is it, you can see it on the bottom of the sheet there.
Yep.
Annual appropriation. It was six fifty, I believe, when I first came in twenty nineteen, then Bob and I went down.
I don't know if the cumulative surplus or deficit is a surplus or deficit. I can't tell at the bottom of the sheet here. You know what I'm saying?
It should, I mean, if it's a deficit, it should be in parentheses.
Or a negative or something, right? Um, I'm cautious to do that because has everybody looked at the budget, the overall budget?
Yeah.
It's up seven percent. That's a pretty substantial up. When we're thinking about also school up more, so we could be looking at a twenty percent tax increase. Which is pretty, pretty substantial. So I'd like to hold off on anything that isn't essential. Well, right, yeah, is it for this year that doesn't cause us real harm in the future? Because we could raise six fifty next year if the pressure wasn't so bad. At seven percent, I've never had a seven percent increase on this. In, in budgeting for the town. It's, it's pretty heavy. Fifty thousand would represent what, in terms of, Marco's not here.
Hello, can I say something?
Yes, please, Joe.
So, just to, to, to get everyone up, and I think Vicki remembers is. Basically, Adam Levine years ago, we used to spend about five hundred thousand. Then we increased it to six hundred. I never remember going to six fifty, but we might have one year. It, if anything, and I, and I hate to be the, the bearer of bad news, Travis. I really would like to rattle it back into the six hundred to five fifty range. And try to do it more there. My only concern, and I, and I don't know what pricing is going on the pavement. Does it seem like it's going up or will it come down because of oil prices? What do you think?
I've never seen.
On our tonnage.
So he's got, he's got a little inflationary number in it already at this, at the. To get to the five fifty, sixty-four that is what is projected to be spent.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so.
I'm more to spend money if we're paving roads that people have been asking for for the last ten years I've been on the board. Than to keep up with the pavement. I know we wanna keep up with the pavement. But we also have to move forward with new stuff, in my opinion, over the next five years, so. I'd rather that be. I'm just saying from my end and from what I hear from our taxpayers. You know, that are on roads that aren't paved, that we are in the process of trying to pave. AKA Blue Brook Road, the rest of the way.
Well, that point six miles is on Blue Brook Road.
Yeah.
But I think that there are certainly neighborhoods that don't want pavement. So, it's kind of, there's, there's some yeses and some no's, I mean, you know, so trying to pave the rest of Holland Road, it's probably not gonna happen.
Which probably, in all honesty, should really happen because I, I can tell it can be difficult. Running the plow trucks and the different types of products we put on it. That sometimes we have to do what's in the best interest. Of the road and the people that live on the road and for our equipment at the best cost effective. So, that I understand is a hurdle on Holland Road, but I, I sure Travis can say it's not easy to deal with. Two pe- pieces of dirt and pavement on the same exact distance road. Is that correct, Travis?
It, it is, as long as. It's okay if it stays like it is right now because we've got accustomed to it, but. Like if we were ever to try to, you'd wanna do that whole strip. You would never like wanna go down to the cemetery and stop. You know, to eliminate the mud that we see every year on the hill by Steve's.
But Steve's the reason we didn't.
But that would, that would, uh. You know, that, at that point, it would make it so much more worth it to just do the whole thing. You know, because.
But I.
Now the curtains go up.
So my question is.
We're not talking about Holland Road. I'm, I'm sorry I brought it up, but there are people who don't want their, the, the roads paved.
There are.
It would also make Holland Road a major.
There's also people that don't want the lights on Main Street like myself, but I didn't have a say in that, so. What I'm saying is what does it make the best sense? Expense wise for the road and the maintenance of the road. That, that is more my concern than an individual not wanting it. Is, is it costing us more money to do it the way we're doing it, Vicki? This is a budget time we're talking about. So, I, I, I'd like to, you know, have a little bit of discussion on Holland Road about what is.
I, I'm not gonna talk about Holland Road. I will leave this room to talk about it because. I know we tried to have it done a few years ago. I know that Bobby spent a lot of time discussing it and. And there was also a big concern that that will become the major highway between, you know, Wilmington, I mean. Wardsboro and, and Dover and the road is very steep. And it's, so if you wanna talk about it, I'm happy to go, go away.
That's, that's, that's classic, okay.
No, that's not.
I again, so I guess.
I, I feel it's a conflict of interest because I live on the road and I've seen what the pavement has done to the scenic beauty of the road, and it's bad.
Okay.
Okay, so, but it's not even in the budget, so can we talk about Blue Brook?
Blue, Blue Brook seems to be the one that we should be doing. Are we doing any new stuff on that? I didn't hear we were through the conversation, correct Travis?
Yes, yes, we are. I put in to do point six miles on Blue Brook.
Okay, so we're going up a little bit further than from where we've gotten. Good.
Yeah, yeah, so, and I have a lot.
From the south end and getting north, you're adding from that end?
Yes, adding from the south end. And, and, and on a note, I have a lot of other. A lot of other ideas for paving new over here in West Dover. That would make a lot more sense. To do them and then, like Joe was saying, we would, our maintenance costs would go down and do themselves, like. Let me give you a couple of examples. Jones Ridge would be one of them. Someday Road. Um, Stuger Road, you know, just pave the loop. Stuff like that would be more beneficial to us. It would eliminate a lot of the mud issues and everything else and you just buzz around it with a salt truck and you're done. I mean, it's. Stuff like, yes, that would. That's what I would see, like to see projected in years going forward here. Yep.
Okay, alright, so, yes.
So in all those roads, besides the mud, you have to put down new material all the time.
Exactly.
Which costs money.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I think.
And grating, and fluoride, like, there's, yes.
I think we had this conversation a couple of years ago, right? The cost per mile.
Right, yeah.
Dirt is higher than for pavement.
Yep.
For maintenance.
Good research, I appreciate that.
Okay, so what is everybody else feeling about the extra fifty thousand he's asking that is basically to build the fund? Yes.
Yeah, because that's like, like what Joe said, he, he said he was more in favor of doing more new and that's kind of where I was headed. Thinking the same thing to doing some of those others with new, you know, little short loops.
Yeah.
Like that.
You know, so, yeah, if you wanna start in your free time.
Yeah.
And do a forecast for the next couple of years.
Yeah, yep.
Because we used to have that and it's kinda called, come back to it.
Yeah.
A smaller version and not, not that that's set in stone, but.
Right.
That we can look forward a few more years.
Yes, and it was easier to do too because he was. From my understanding, they were projecting plans for milling and overlaying and, and all this and that from all the, what we had existing, which is all been done now, you know? So, yes, I will work on something for possible objective years.
Yeah, well, because the other thing is I think there are some people at town meeting that are really upset because they think that their road's getting paved.
But we could just write it as like proposed.
Yes.
For the next couple of years, you know, it's nonsense, and it often changes.
Right, yeah.
But it gives people a heads up that it's being considered, so if there's going to be objections, they're not showing up. The year that we're planning to do it and you're getting really, we didn't tell them.
And the other reason for the, for the added cost to was. With, with doing the new, the initial, because it takes more, we gotta do the base. And then, and then the top coat, so your tonnages are up. You don't get quite as far as you would with your inch and a half overlay. So.
Yes, I get that.
Yep.
So, is everybody good with six fifty or should we just? Put that, a question mark by that until we know how bad the budget looks because it looks pretty rough.
I, I would be fine waiting because it looks like. If, if I'm reading, if the cumulative surplus deficit. Is it what we think it is, which is if it's not in parentheses, it's a positive number, we're going to come out. Oh, we're gonna come out more ahead this year than this, than the year we're in now. So maybe we can hold off for another year and still be, still not put you in a bind or have to hit people with a bang.
Okay, anybody have anything else?
Let's say, that, that all being said, like I, I would be more okay with putting money towards something like that, that long term is going to be saving us money than other places. But it seems like waiting and seeing how bad it's really gonna be.
Well, that's, that's to build the fund, that, that, that isn't, just because we, this is what we're planning to do. This is to put money in the bank at a lower, you know, than, and not of a great interest rate, so basically having money in the bank for another fifty thousand dollars. But. I think the property tax pressures will be really hard this, rough this year, and a lot of it isn't the town, a lot of it's school, but we, we all pay the whole thing, that's all that'll be considered.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes.
So are we changing that back to six hundred thousand? For funds available?
That would be how I would vote.
So then we come up with a negative two thousand four hundred and ninety-five. For your cumulative surplus deficit.
But we're just gonna keep talking. That doesn't have to be there, but that, just put a question mark by that or something, okay?
Okay.
Alright. That little building, you wanna talk about your part first and then Mike, your own, or your?
Top of the building, Jeanette. So, for twenty-four, twenty-five. I was gonna talk to you guys about the brick building this year as to how much you think we should. Put forth. I mean, I don't, with the well and with everything else, we're not ready to do the furnaces yet, are we? Right.
Have we been, has, have there been issues already with the furnace up there this year?
Uh, a couple of times, but they've been able to reset and, you know. We're still limping them along. So I didn't, you know, I didn't really put in anything for that. That was just what we had already had in there. Um, so I didn't really focus on the brick building that much because I wanted to ask you guys about, you know, where we were with the well and, and.
Well, we're getting ready.
Yeah. I figured it was.
Long test and then we'll have a better idea after we spend a whole bunch.
Right, so that's why I didn't change that at all. I left it. Um. Let me go through all the others? Okay, transfer station. I'd like to see ten thousand dollars for that. So. I wanna replace one of the overhead doors, which it doesn't have to be an insulated door because the building's not insulated, so it'll be relatively. Relatively cheap to do the door and that thing, in the transfer station. And the reason there's a retaining wall on there. I would like to add another demolition box outside. Where. A contractor could either dump into it or. If the demo box, it often happens, is it full inside the transfer station? We have a secondary one. Out back that people could dump into. Um, so that way we would have two, one could always be, you know, mostly empty. We wouldn't have to wait for, because I know we've had times where. We call and they can't come until, so it's, that's happened more and more since Casella takeover. So the retaining wall is to build a spot into the bank out behind the transfer station where they can back the demo box in beside. And a road to go up around, which we can construct. So people could access that demo box.
Okay.
Um.
A question.
Yes.
So you charge people to do this, will this be an issue where somebody's done something and they're not gonna pay for it?
Well. That's the reason for having the road go up around where you could access it because I was wondering about gating that or putting something across. I mean, we're, we're in and out all day long. They'd have to. They would have to. If, if they were down at the ground level behind the transfer station, they'd have to get it quite, quite a ways up over. I mean, they, it could be done. Um.
Okay.
But we, that, you know, that's the other thing. We can, we can also install cameras, which isn't a terrible idea as something either.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, that.
Yeah, cameras are a big deal.
Yeah. But yes, it would be outside, it would be open, it would, you know. But I would want it on the backside of the transportation, that way. When they came through, fees are paid, they can go right up back, do their thing. And then exit the same place everybody else is exiting. Um. And then I'd like to start replacing overhead doors in our town where I wish. The first year I was here, Bob and I had put money in. And we, 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 we kinda just band-aided them. We put, we replaced tracks that needed replacing, we replaced panels that needed replacing. But it's getting now, after so many years of use where. The, the doors are getting really outdated, they're starting to, they're starting to rust out again. The, the motor, the openers aren't. Some, we're having troubles with openers and so, you know, that's another thing where that falls into. You know, efficiency. If I can get a new insulated door, like we lose a lot of heat out of our overhead doors, so. I'd like to put sixty-eight thousand in and that'll only do half of them.
Okay, so, how many, how many doors and what, what's the estimate for doors?
Ten, there's ten doors.
So you're talking about.
And it's, and it's almost ten thousand per door.
Have you reached out to efficiency Vermont about any kind of rebates for, because you'd be upgrading the building on board?
I haven't, no.
Yeah.
I haven't.
This is, this is a wish list.
I get it, I told you, but that might be another way to pay.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if I can get it, get some funding, that'd be great, you know?
Because this is a subs, are you getting this?
Yeah.
That's really a hundred and seventy-five for capital building.
What?
Versus eighty.
Last year's budget, what had we budgeted for this year?
Eighty.
Oh.
I mean, that was the projection, eighty going.
We're gonna do eighty, okay.
Okay, so that's, that's a pretty heavy, that's ninety-five thousand dollars. This is on top of the seven percent. But, because these are additional articles we vote, so that's even more money.
Right.
So that makes it more. I think we need to really be cognizant of this. Um, the town hall, there's no money and there, there is five thousand dollars and we had no money budgeted.
Yeah, that, oh, well, to do the.
Painting.
Painting of the trim, all, any of the exterior wood trim on the town hall needs to be scraped and painted. And all the estimates that I have gotten have all been under the shy of five thousand. That's why that's there. Um.
Excuse me, well, expenses aren't, didn't we both use the R company?
For best stuff we've already, we do have that available for more. But we only paid the bills that we had. Yeah.
Right, no, I did.
Incurred at that time.
But didn't we, when we voted, didn't we leave that open or?
It is open, but we haven't voted to spend any more. Okay.
Um, town office, I think Jeanette could tell you more about that one than I could.
Um, yes, but also, well. I'm gonna go back to the brick building too, but, um, the town office. I mean, I guess a lot of this stuff has just been, you know, we haven't done anything in this building for a while. So it's just starting, the carpet's starting to show a lot where. Um, the paint, there's a lot of cracks in the paint, not so much up here, but more downstairs. Um. But, you know, those concerns may be put off to another year. Um, but I think the most. What would be the most efficient for us would be the central air, looking into that. Um, I did reach out to efficiency Vermont about that, um, they're going to get back to me. I said to Nidos also, that's something that they have a person they contract with who's gonna come out on Wednesday and just take a look at the building. Um, so. Um. That would be my preference, I guess, for the central air first and then probably not the other things.
Did anybody kinda have a guesstimate about how much that central air would be of that whole number?
I'm thinking. Thinking probably about twenty thousand. But I don't have, I don't have a firm.
I mean, you certainly would want central air put in prior to doing a lot of some of that other stuff because you don't know, we're gonna be tearing up floors or doing. Touching holes in walls with what you're gonna be doing. Anybody have any thoughts on, on the town office upgrades?
They all sound reasonable, but is, is there any way to get? A little bit more itemized information, just so if we're gonna pick and choose, we're kinda looking at.
Sure, I mean, I know the carpeting, just based on a Home Depot pricing, it's probably gonna range between like eight and ten thousand for the carpeting. And the painting, I don't know, I just, I presume maybe Mr. Smith could do the painting, so we would not hire somebody to do it, but I don't know if he has time to do that either, so. But that can be, I mean, honestly, it, it can be put off, it's gonna be put off for, for a while now. Um, but eventually it's gonna. Really need it. I know Travis was talking about pressure washing.
Yes.
That was like a thousand.
The exterior of this building.
It's the exterior.
If you look at the vinyl siding outside, it is dirty, dirty, dirty. I would really like to spend five hundred dollars on the pressure wash.
I think that's the kind of thing that's just basically maintenance.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not a capital expenditure.
Yep.
That's, that's just, it should be on a schedule for every three or four years or whatever it is.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Yep.
It just, it's five hundred dollars is not.
Yeah.
These, these are pretty expensive.
Yeah, okay.
Alright.
Um, and like I explained earlier, uh, the West Old Firehouse, I don't, I don't know if, if Reggie still wants to do the furnace or not. Yeah, I, I haven't, we haven't had any issues with it that I'm aware of. Um. I am aware, however aware, that we have had, the basement floor drain had been clogged, which has been. Mitigated, you know, we had had it, we got it cleaned out completely and it's flowing good now. Um, but that created some mold issues in the basement, so I really think we should. Take care of that, the mold down there.
And do, is that ten thousand? Because there was forty-five thousand in for the furnace and the floor.
I would, I would say ten to fifteen for the mold. I, 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 that would be on the high side, I think. Because there, you know, half of the basement's concrete wall. But, but the spots where there is sheetrock, it has cracked up the wall at least eighteen inches. So, yeah, you know, they gotta take out.
Yeah.
Probably at least. Probably at least. Two footer better of the bottom all the way around and. You know, a sheet rock or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Before it becomes a real problem with everything else and I don't want to keep. Bestering down there. Um, and then I believe Mike had.
Yeah.
His, his own thing with the police station going for the billing, right?
Yeah, I mean. For twenty-four, twenty-five, we have nothing slated.
Yeah.
Yeah. And are you gonna add, add to this number or?
For the twenty-four, twenty-five?
Uh-huh. Okay.
So twenty-five, twenty-six, we're looking at doing the size.
Yeah, so we bumped that, I forget what it was at, I think just like ten thousand, but I got a um. So Randy Dave and I walked around, did some measurements, and then I got a quote on just materials is about eleven thousand. And everybody saw me to double that for firing outside later, which really need to do because of the height.
Okay, well, I appreciate you looking forward to next year, you know, the year beyond next year.
But for twenty-four, twenty-five, forget, um, and just as a note. The six thousand from twenty-two, twenty-three.
Mm-hmm.
Is still there, since it was never spent and. So in spring or early summer, we are gonna be doing some, yeah, exterior doors with that. Is that fine? I've already talked to Dave about that.
I don't have account balances for those building accounts. For that various.
We like maybe somebody already.
Yes.
I understand what.
The capital accounts.
I haven't seen the numbers either, but.
Capital. Capital paving funds, yeah, but see, they haven't been funded yet, right? Cause it's negative six hundred and forty thousand dollars, so that's done. Yeah. But sometimes the money just hasn't been. Okay. Okay. So, there you go. And then we're gonna move on to capital equipment.
Capital equipment.
Yes, sorry, could I just go back to the the daycare?
The day.
Oh, yeah.
Hard build, brick building.
Brick building, because Andrea had reached out to me about. Um, getting some numbers together, she was waiting to run on. Home Depot was coming up to give them an estimate for carpeting and flooring in the daycare. Portion of the building, um, she said. It's probably been twenty-five years since.
Yes, it's really bad.
Ever been replaced, so. That was on her.
Some of the tile or the carpet?
Carpet and.
Carpet in the original. Not the addition.
In the daycare portion of the.
Right, but the daycare has, there's, they have a room that was part of the original building and then they have an addition that was out towards the front.
Uh, I presume it was.
The whole thing.
I believe that is.
Both sections.
Cushion, tile. And what section is that from?
It's, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah. The tree down.
That used to be where the mobile classroom was. And we had the mobile classroom that I attended. They went to the Dover School. And then eventually was. You know, hauled off to Neverland. Um.
So anyway.
So we got a lot of things going on with this, does anybody have anything that they think? We should postpone, I mean, this is, this is a huge increase, this is ninety-five thousand dollars. Over what we had kind of forecast, and it doesn't mean. See, this is the problem, I think we really need somebody who does look at facilities, all kinds of facilities, because you guys are spread thin.
Yes.
And.
Yeah.
And try to really put a plan together, because we're pretty much knee-jerking things, because we see something and we run after it and then, then we, oh, Joe.
May I speak on that, Vicky? So, my tenure on the board. We seem to defer things. And then they become a bigger problem later on. Because we don't have the money in the budget. Exactly what you're talking about. So. Having a facility thing is a great thing. But not sticking to the plan and then everything coming to a head is what's occurring right now, in my personal opinion.
Well.
So.
If we stuck to the plan, Joe, we would only be spending seventy thousand dollars next year, but clearly.
About. Some of the plans on some things we were gonna do and then we kind of kept moving it ahead, these, we had a plan in place. For some of this, like putting in the the furnace, putting in different things, we had a, just like we do with the capital plan with trucks, we have. Different things that we have that we were gonna purchase. So. It's, it's gonna be painful, but we need to, we need to probably spend some money and we're gonna be over budget. Which is unfortunate to the taxpayers, and the taxpayer is always at an account meeting can decide if they wanna keep. Going backwards, so we can always have two plans in place for town meeting, not just one plan, in my opinion. But with that said, you only, all listening to all the talking, I just wanted to bring up. The, the, my big concern is what we can do best for our customer service or for our taxpayers is what he's talking about with that dumpster. People do one thing in town, go to the dump, but don't use any of our other services and then can't utilize it, isn't right. So whatever we can do to make the dump a better thing for folks in our town, there are taxpayers already paying the bill, we should try to do that. What he's talking about with that dumpster. People do one thing in town, go to the dump, but don't use any of our other services and then can't utilize it, isn't right. So whatever we can do to make the dump a better thing for folks in our town, there are taxpayers already paying the bill, we should try to do that.
Okay.
Food for talk.
Oh, okay.
Can I just add something to that? Um, you do have the municipal, the Merck, municipal, uh, wherever that's.
Yes.
So we do have, um. We put in for both the library daycare building and the town hall. So they are gonna come out and do assessments on those two buildings anyways, um, which would be covered by that, a grant.
Was that, that's the mini grant?
Yes, yes, no, not the mini grant, that's for something different.
Okay.
Um, that's for like a.
Community.
But yes, but they are coming to do assessments on those two buildings, um, January thirty-first. But, you know, it's kind of.
So in regards to trying to do something, when planning to do it and then putting it off. When I had the electrical ground fault in my place, one of refrigeration units cost me three thousand dollars, now it's nine thousand dollars. So it's typical, everything has tripled, so sometimes waiting. Um, to have the right tax base and make everybody happy shoots you in the foot.
I get that, and that's not what I was saying at all, I'm saying we need to have. The vision looking forward and then plan it properly, because all of a sudden this year, in this particular tax year, we're gonna, it seems like we might coming. Next, you know, our, what we're planning today is gonna cost a lot more money and maybe we need help. Forecasting these things better so that we put the money in the budget.
I agree.
That's, that was my point and that it wasn't that. You know, if we really need all this stuff this year, then we should raise the money for it. And but then we also need to say, next year, we probably are gonna need more, and in this capital budget, it says we need probably at least a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it might be more by the time we get there, but some of these things are just starting to crop up. Like that weren't on our schedule looking out forward.
Yeah.
And this, you know, we're probably not gonna be in a position to do the heating system at the daycare, at the brick building, because of the situation with the water.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, yes.
Do we have any forecast of the funds from our tax base being that we're reassessing the houses and we have more people? And more houses involved, though we're gonna be increasing our revenue that we collect from the taxpayers, just based on attrition.
Well, I'm sure that we will be, because there have been a lot of building, that there will be more pro taxable properties in town for this coming tax year. But we're also gonna be heading then into a reassessment and reappraisal and everything, so it's, it's, it's a complicated moving.
Many moving parts.
Many move, well, obviously, our county taxes has gone up because of our, um. Higher population, because that number like doubled.
Yeah, that number a lot.
Yeah. So.
I made an open.
I'm sure that's based on. Populations. Okay. Um.
I mean, if you guys feel it's best and. Break down the overhead doors into three different years and I'll just do a couple each year.
So. Okay, so Travis, Travis.
You know what I mean?
Okay, so you've, you've gotten broken down to two years.
I've got it broken down into two years.
Five doors a year.
Yep. Just about, well, just about, yeah.
Okay. But see, we had. Not had that on our community. You know?
Yeah.
So, that's the kind of thing we wanna, when you see a need starting to come, we should get it out in that further year, you know, next year or the year after and say. We need to do it, and that's for everybody, you know? So I'm, I'm thinking that one more place we can cut is here, I think the air conditioning, in my opinion, is very important, because we're running all these portable.
Yes.
And then you do that as a phase one and then add phase two, the, the reconditioning of the interior of the building in terms of walls and floors.
Yeah. So if you, if you took that sixty-eight. That you've broken into two, if you break it into three, it's forty-five, so we're saving, you know, it's like.
The price is gonna go up.
Right, right.
Yeah, as, as, when we did, when I was pricing the doors when Bob and I did just the parts and pieces, the doors were like. You know, seven to eight thousand piece, now they're at ten. Yeah, or ten or a little lower. Yeah.
You can't, we can't like. Purchase some things and put them somewhere and like.
Know what you mean.
Yeah.
But these have to be installed professionally.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, that's what I'm saying, you know, can you purchase them and then?
And then have a truck run into them and then whatever.
I just don't have the storage.
Yeah, I'm trying.
More pods.
Yeah, yeah, it's just like, are we? Yeah, I don't wanna be like penny wise and dollar dumb.
So the. Efficiency Vermont has, um. Rebates for. Um, deckless, like mini splits, which function is heat and cooling, um, also for, um, heat to water pumps. That will, it's a bigger overhaul. Um, but they have pretty substantial.
For municipal too?
Well, it's, it, I went into business because it's instead of residential. So we may be able to, the mini splits may end up costing us like. Twenty-five percent of what they would actually, you know, if we can get the rebates. So that would be, that's one, that's one way we could make that be more efficient.
Yeah, and we definitely wanna, when we do the new, whatever we do for a new heating system at the brick building, go in the same room, try to get, yes.
Yes.
System. Then that one, and then a refrigeration unit, I got a three hundred fifty dollar rebate from efficiency Vermont. And I've spent a hundred dollars less a month in my electricity.
There you go.
I got fifty dollar refund in the deep end of it.
Taddy.
So I just thought if we go towards a mini split or mass style, then we're only heating or cooling what we need at the time. We're not universally cooling a whole building when maybe not all of those rooms are used, so I think we'll be in some efficiency that way as well.
Yeah. So. As a sliver, could we take the town office down to twenty-one thousand? For this year and put twenty in for next year? It's a minor thing, but, you know. I think that, I think that I agree, we need to move to more energy efficiency and make it more comfortable, it's crazy to run all these window area units.
And they're noisy too.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's hard to run a meeting here. All right, all right.
Okay, so then now we gotta. Split the sixty-eight thousand for the garage?
Well, it's the retaining.
Oh, yeah, that's, that includes the retaining wall, right?
No.
Right.
Oh, that.
All the retaining walls for the transfer station.
Oh, okay.
That's part of the ten thousand.
Okay.
Okay, so, I, for now, I'm thinking. If we leave it in for the five doors, but then research whether efficiency Vermont or federal program. Would rebate it and that that would be a way to reduce the cost.
Yeah, so. Overhead doors, one half, sixty-eight thousand to town garage, overhead doors remaining fifty, why would it be cheaper the second year?
Not a bad half, it might have been over half for the other one and then. I'll have to. I'll have to look in my email from.
Okay.
Champion.
Oh, they wanted more, they, that we could lock in the price?
Yeah, they, they. Cause I. There's, there's the new section of the building up back and then there's, and then there's the whole old section.
Okay.
So, yeah, it would be.
It may be a, a.
There's four, there's four doors up in the newer section and the, the morgue building section, and then the old, the old brick.
Yeah.
Cement block building, there's.
And that's the one you wanna do first?
It, no, I think it, if I remember right, I had do, I had it to do. Two in the old section and all four in the new, in the morgue building.
Okay, so it's like six doors?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
And that's why it was.
I get it.
What it was.
Okay. What else for a capital building?
That's it.
Okay. That's it, Rich, about the firehouse, I think.
Yeah, I know.
Capital equipment. Oh, wow, let's have Mike start us off with that.
So we had a line, I had a six cruiser. And then rotating everything out to a six-year replacement schedule at sixty thousand. Just because the price of everything we're buying is going up. Two years ago, it was forty-one, make sure it was fifty and we can be over even if we didn't do the replacement, well, we would have been over if we hadn't used our coupons to get the new cruiser on the road. The six cruiser, right? Uh, so like the Tahoe costs forty-seven, it's roughly ten thousand. To outfit. When we're replacing a cruiser. And from everything I'm hearing from vendors, if the price of everything's going up. So I just put a little bit more in there. Honestly, important to them. And the only other thing we have on there, I believe, is the P technology, which is the computers in the car. Those prices are, were maybe pretty steady for us at the sixty-three.
Okay. Do we think that we oughta escalate the price of those cruisers down the road by? A little every two grand a year or something?
I think it would be a good idea, um, again, everybody has talked through both the vehicle itself and the equipment. Is. Going up a little bit.
Yeah.
Like we're hearing about seven percent for the vehicle just for next year, but those prices are out yet. And that's the back and find function, which is extremely difficult to find.
So at least for twenty-five, twenty-six forward, maybe we should put.
An extra two, like four on that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that we, we really need to, and you know, we can always scale that back.
Yeah, we'll see what happens next year, yeah. Yes.
What's the feeling? Sure, chief. Yeah, what's the feeling?
So what's the feeling on the new? Uh, police set of, uh, a trail, I don't know.
Tahoe.
Yeah, yeah, is that, are you guys like, is that, was that a good?
So far, everybody likes driving it, I mean, I don't know if you've seen it around town, it's.
Big.
Giant, um, we don't have it, it's not cruiser ready yet, it's, it's, it's just kind of being passed around like. I have seven Sam's Cruiser today, because he had training, so he took that. Um, other than that, I'm gonna be driving it around, um, until we get it outfitted with all the equipment, which, uh, just for today is probably gonna be. Mid to late February at best, which, if that's the case, I might just push it out closer to the spring, because it will be easier on us.
Yeah.
But we all like it, um, it drives good, handles well, a little snow, it's been, has been fine. It's four-wheel drive versus all-wheel drive, so we're saving, you know, three to four. Um, but yeah, no complaints yet.
It is big.
It's bigger than.
And how about gas mileage, you know?
We don't, we haven't, um, I mean, it's obviously a much bigger tank, but we haven't, haven't really done. Done a solid math yet, there's a function, but like as in, we don't have enough miles for it to, to get a snack or a eating.
This was jumping on off and that gets like more in there, more cost efficient, well, I run to do that, that's something.
As of right now, that's the plan, um, next year, that's what I already looking to do another one, unless for some reason between now. As of right now, that's the plan, um, next year, that's what I already looking to do another one, unless for some reason between now and that.
Actually, like it's one, it's gonna be.
So of course, we've had issues with, and um, the people that I've talked to that have these shows, I've not had the same issues.
Right, that's important. All right, so Jeanette, on those, can we go up at, starting in twenty five, twenty six, two thousand dollars? Uh, keep adding on, so two, four, six, eight, I think that we need to do that. So starting in twenty five, twenty six.
The other thing we're finding is, uh, just to throw it out there, every, every year when they upgrade a model of a car, they make just enough changes that the equipment we bought the previous year, can't fit into it too, so you have to buy a new interior light bars, cuz they don't fit quite right, so. The cost savings we used to see with like exterior light bars and swapping them isn't.
That can't happen.
Yeah, it's not, that's consistent at least.
Okay, all right.
So, I'm sorry, so how many years you wanted to?
Just go till the end.
You wanna just keep going two more each year?
Yeah, the, so go show.
Sixty two, sixty four.
Yeah, so just keep going, because it's, if we couldn't happen, it's probably. Anything else, Mike?
No, that's what I have.
Okay.
There, there, I will throw out that with the six cruisers, when it's time to replace mine, which is EQ two, which currently would be the twenty six, twenty seven, we may be able to do some savings there, cuz I don't need a huge. You know, we're not gonna put a bunch of stuff in, it's gonna be radio, computer lights, so I can get somewhere. All the other bells and whistles won't be in it, and we've been kicking around the idea of just putting smaller, all the drive part will cost a lot less to have, to buy and to operate.
Okay.
Just sort of that out there, so at some point, there might be some cost savings, I just haven't looked at nothing to know what that's gonna look like in, which is the four years.
Okay. Thank you. Travis. Back to you.
Yeah, all right. So as you can see, this year is projected to do another ten wheeler. I am leaning towards not doing that. I'm trying to think outside the box here on this, um, after spoke with some of my guys about theirs, um, I would like, I'd, I'd like to still budget the two thirty, if you wanna cut it back, the the, the least I would cut it back is to two ten with what I'm gonna propose to you.
So you're proposing that this ten wheeler is is gonna move somewhere, going to move to something else?
So I wanna get another little truck to replace that ten wheeler that I have. And in purchasing the, in in purchasing the little truck, okay, I can, I can build a little truck for, you know, one, one fifty, one sixty, and then I still need sixty to put towards, I wanna refurbish that old spare truck that we have. So we would still have a spare ten wheeler to use if we needed so, but we are increasingly having to come in and solve for all these dustings, these little st- little tiny storms, and with the the truck that's being replaced is the one that clouds Dover Hill. So if, and he's right close to the shop, back and forth all day long during a storm or during these dustings, that's his roof. We think we can get away with another little truck, on that roof, and then when he needs the big truck, the old one has been all refurbished and we can just grab it and go.
Okay.
And I believe I can do it all for, you know, if you guys budget for two hundred and ten thousand, I can, I can work with that, and I expect to try to sell that twenty eighteen ten wheeler. I'm gonna try to get one thirty for it, private sale. It's worth every penny of that, so, you know, um, that's what I'm shooting for, is try to get as much as I can out of that truck. Um, and then in the, in the next year, um, that, the twenty twenty max in the twenty five, twenty six year that I'm looking to replace, that is um to the point where I wanna keep that truck as the spare, and then we figure out what we wanna do with the truck we were just refurbished, which could possibly be, you put a, you put a hook lit on it, so you can truck some of your own dumpsters, out to Casella and s- save us on some truck, maybe not every trip, but it, it could be done, so these are ideas that I'm picking out.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? Um, so that's, that's where I'm at with the big trucks. Um, and Dave's, Dave's maintenance pickup is 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 due this year, and I'd like to budget sixty thousand for that. I don't know what we'll get in trade, and, you know, I can go online and give you a Kelly Blue Book value, roughly estimate what they would give us, I haven't looked it up yet, but, if I bring it to a dealer, they're not gonna give me a trade value until we're ready to do the deal, you know?
Right, right.
And that, that, that pickup is something that I I would do the trade on, I wouldn't try to sell that outright, but the ten wheeler, oh yeah, I'd sell that, private sale, like we did the last one.
Sarah.
So we have a sale of asset slash trade in of one thirty six, how much of that is from highway and?
Well, I sold the last ten wheeler for a hundred thousand.
Yeah, it's a hundred thousand.
That's what I'm just saying, we put one thirty six in there, is that?
The ten wheeler, so we flip the page, you'll see the trade in values.
Yeah, there.
Hundred thousand, thirty, twenty eight, no, that's okay, and then the one police car was the eight thousand, so.
Um, so how do we explain this so it makes sense in this, cuz, you know, it doesn't really, this isn't really representing what the the plan would be.
No, it's, and no, it's not, because that, that, you would be, you'd be giving up that ten wheeler for another little, another CB five one five international dump truck like we bought last year. So you, it would.
So we need to get a, put that in there.
Yes.
And then, then we need like a.
We need a new line item, and this line item will be blacked out past this year, cuz it's not being replaced, and then the new line item.
I mean, I, you know what, you know how, what, you know what you could do is, it would be, they have that, we have that, uh, should be a twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen Mac. I don't see it in here. Well, it would be, you'd put sixty thousand under the, under that, under the Mac, for, and it, that would be for refurbishing.
Okay, and then add a hundred and sixty or whatever, hundred.
There's a twenty nineteen Mac on.
No, it it it's older than that, that that, the the spare truck is a twenty fourteen or fifteen.
Did we did, did we take it off the budget, cuz we want to replace it?
But usually this is like, this is an inventory of everything that we could finance it.
Yeah. It should be, um, I don't see.
I'm looking.
Yeah.
Twenty nineteen Mac, is that it?
No.
I don't see it on here either.
Either way, it's that, it's that older truck that Bob and I kept that.
Mm-hmm. All right, well, we need to figure out a way to explain that, so that it, we remember and people understand what we're doing.
Yeah.
And.
So, so basically, you you would, you'd, you wouldn't be losing a truck, you'd, you'd, you'd downsize your truck.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? We still have the availability of a ten wheeler. We just would be switching it out for a smaller truck. And then, you know, and then a few years down the road, when we replace the all wheel drive, we just get a, another ten wheeler.
So what, you're telling us, with all that said, and how we're gonna explain this in here?
Yeah.
That we're moving this down to two hundred and ten thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
To two hundred, yes, if you're gonna leave it as budgeting for the twenty eighteen Mac truck, you just bump it down to two ten, and I can do what I need to from there and.
So we need to somehow capture that in here, so.
Yeah.
Have to talk with.
I can have Marco add in a line for the other one.
Need to add in the twenty.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we need to move, yeah. So we wanna buy a CB five one five.
Yep, like we bought last year, that truck has been just awesome.
So we put in a, another line that basically says a new per- a new purchase, basically.
Well, it would actually, it would replace the twenty eighteen.
Yeah, but that's not, but then, we're not.
That's why I think the the, the twenty eighteen.
You could take that right out.
We leave it in there, but we, but we blackout the boxes after this year to just to indicate that it's gone.
Yeah.
And then create a new line item that starts from this year.
That, well, it's, it's just start, it, it's a new prop, new something.
Right, right, there wouldn't be any entries prior.
You guys can figure that out, and it's not, that, that, so that it still fits on a piece of paper too, that's the problem.
Where?
Huh?
Right, no, I get it.
Okay, you guys figure that out, so that's down twenty thousand.
You just move everything down.
Okay. All right, and then fire department looks like it's just the gear hose and, uh, communications and radios, so it's all occurring. So this is the one, area where it doesn't look like we're projecting to go up in terms of revenue rates. Yay.
So it's expected.
Yes. Okay.
So do we, do we maybe wanna make this six hundred, so that we can do six fifty for, um.
Well, we have that looming fire ladder truck coming at some point.
But if we took fifty from here and put it in.
You mean, you wanna go down?
In pavement.
That's, we, well, all these numbers are gonna change there.
Right.
Right.
I mean, I'm not saying I wanna do that, I'm just suggesting it is possible.
The ten, the ten wheelers in these projected years needs to go up to two hundred and eighty thousand, because the chassis had just gone through the roof.
I I see that that's been adjusted.
Okay, all right.
That's been, that's adjusted in this.
Cuz they're.
Okay.
And 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 with the government, they're, they're gonna put, they're gonna force another round of, diesel emissions on these trucks, and I'm fearing for the worst on that, so hopefully we can just buy a couple trucks and then see where we're at. Might have to just, we might have to start pushing it down, you know?
Yep.
And I I foresee a ten wheeler taking a year and a half to build anyway, so like, that two hundred and eighty, even if you budgeted for now here, I don't think it would be spent until the year following. You'll order the truck and it's a year and a half before you go take delivery of that. Things are that far behind, dealers are that far behind, and the truck builders are.
Wow.
Yeah, so like, you know, the, you can, yeah, you can budget for the two eighty for next year, but you you, you might not see a spend, until the year after, when it's.
That's just crazy.
Oh, it is, it's insane. It's, it's.
A lot of white trucks.
It's, it's, it's.
Two thousand and four, the same.
Yeah, is that?
Yep.
All right, well, I mean, we could look at taking that down this year to six hundred, and that would reduce some of the pressure on the capital building fund. If that, I don't know what that does to the numbers. This year, six hundred. Down to five.
Any balance is forty six thousand, thirty, seventy seven.
Now, it should be. And did we change the at trade in?
I upped the trade ins, but, with me selling them outright, we're gonna get considerably more.
Are we actually gonna trade it next year?
Uh.
Selling it outright, I'm sorry.
This year, we're gonna sell the twenty eighteen ten wheeler out, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And you think you can get a hundred and thirty, so we should up that, that, a hundred and thirty.
Menu.
The twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
So that one instead of a hundred.
Yeah, so that all these are interconnected.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Maybe, maybe that's, that's, if we only raise six hundred thousand, we should be okay. And with the trade ins and everything.
No, if I, if I, if we budget for two ten, and I sell that truck for one thirty, all that, the highway it's spent, on the, on, on replacing that big truck with a little truck is, and refurbishing the old one, is eighty thousand. After, you know what I mean? That's, that's what you're looking at.
Okay.
Considering everything, the better it goes, as planned.
As planned. Well, it sounds like we need to spend a lot of money on our buildings this year, um, so, uh, that will help a little, cuz that's fifty thousand more. All right. Any other questions on any of the capital comments? Jeanette, we lost Joe, I thought he said he was driving here.
Yeah, I don't know, there's not a red sign, but I thought he said he was coming too.
Sorry.
I didn't know where he is.
So now, if we're done with those for today, and we we obviously we got clean copies of those.
I'll update.
Yes, um, let's go back to the view budget, now we have a cleaner copy of the budget. There's one here. There's, um, yeah. Travis, I, since I know that I marked this, I was looking through the, between the budget copy here. Um, fuel.
Yes.
Um, for vehicles, uh, so I'm, hold on, let me get there. Okay, so, and I have some question, we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for fuel and oil for vehicles. Uh, next year, you're going to one sixty. Prices are going down.
Yeah.
For now.
Yeah, I know, but I, I'm gonna look at our year to date, and that's now that I never more. And then last time I asked you, do we go through more fuel in the winter months than any other time of the year?
Oh, yes.
And you were gonna look at that for those numbers? Oh, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Absolutely.
I'm looking at the, I mean, so, I I've got it in the budget, I'm looking at year to date.
Yeah, it's at thirty one percent.
That's what we're up to.
Mm-hmm.
Can you see that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
And we got to go till July.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Small juke.
Oh, yeah. That's not bad. Move that at all.
And we're, I'm just thinking, if we could chase, maybe we should chase ten thousand, just keep it level.
Yeah, love, yeah. Yeah, no, that, yeah.
I mean, it's, we've got a hundred and sixty thousand budgeted, there's ten thousand more.
Yeah.
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 I mean, do you, do you have a sense of how much more the winter is than the summer?
And and considering like, you know, we we trucked a lot when we got that, the the flooding, too, in July, so. Now that's on there too already, so, yeah, I would say.
Okay.
That's just, take that.
All right, I don't, I don't wanna under, under represent here.
No, no, that, that.
Okay, so.
So, I'm sorry, so we're gonna move from one sixty to one fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you get a sense of how much more are you spending in the winter than the summer, just kind of percentage wise, is it like double?
No, it wasn't quite double, because we are out a lot in the summer, between the, the digging projects and whatnot, so. No, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't quite half, but it was, it was close.
And granted, a lot of this stuff is little stuff, but.
You also have floods in the summer.
Yeah, yeah, it's dependent on the weather, you know, a lot of it.
Okay, and then.
Whole one percent, so now it's at six percent overall for the budget.
So how much brought down one percent, taking down ten thousand?
Really?
It's at six percent now. Total highway.
Yep, okay. Uh, I had another question, Travis.
Yeah.
It's the professional development. You looked at, at the ten thousand dollars.
Yeah.
We haven't spent much this year.
Right.
Now that we probably aren't gonna go through the whole thing.
Yep.
With the current, do we, we need ten thousand dollars in professional development for the highway department?
I would say. I'd like to keep at least five in there, so to give it a little bit of discussion, I would say, say, you know, sixty five hundred or seven.
Okay.
Okay with that, if you wanted to cut us off.
I just.
I wanna say five because. Five thousand for sure would get you a CDL driver.
Okay.
Anytime.
Okay.
If we have to train.
So, but don't we have one we have to put through CDL?
We did.
And is it gonna happen next year or this year?
Probably in the spring.
Okay.
So in this.
He's got, he still has yet to go, he's got a test to go get his permits, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
I'm looking.
Sure, is the, the paving inspection, that, that training for two of you, right, is completely done?
I have one more segment left to do. It's sixteen hour.
How much?
Yeah.
Okay.
Five hundred dollars.
Yes, five hundred and fifty two dollars is what we spent of ten thousand.
That's what.
So, if we did another. Five hundred, six, whatever, six thousand dollars, would that get us this EDL train, training and, or sixty five?
Sixty five.
Alright, take that down to sixty five.
Well, the CDL was coming in this calendar year.
Yeah, we may need another CDL next year.
Right, yeah, I would keep it, I would keep at least sixty five in there.
And then we can get somebody else trained on the paving.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, anybody who has any questions about budget, just. Say something.
Winter plum rentals are up.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I saw that. I'm just gonna look at some of these that are low percentages. That's where. Focusing on Travis and then he can get out of here if he wants to.
Your computer was. Your actual in twenty two, twenty three was only a hundred and seventy dollars.
Yeah, you can knock that back down. I got my tablet that you wanted. I should have brought it.
There's another copy, right? It was right here.
I got it over here.
Okay, um, I was gonna ask about valley trail maintenance and expense. Right now, we've spent ten percent of the twenty five thousand. I'm just.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm, I'm just trying to look forward because I am meeting with. With Eric sometime in the spring about fixing up the crosstown trail, so. I'm gonna need something for that as far as, and, you know, if. Possibly some more materials to. To do that, or, or I've had, I've kicked around the idea about fixing up that parking lot on the handleside, cause that. It's level and then it just kind of slopes towards the ditch. I've seen people get sliding, slid down in there in the winter and everything else, so.
Okay, alright.
If I could have that, I'd really like to.
Okay.
But we should change that to valley trail slash crosstown trail.
It's basically trail maintenance.
Yeah, that's, that's how, that's how I.
Okay.
Use it as, yes.
Yes. And about crosstown.
Yeah.
But I just, we'd only spent twenty five hundred dollars of the twenty five thousand.
Yeah.
That we have in the budget and we're budgeting another twenty five thousand the year after.
Yeah.
So I just wanna make sure that we're not just over budgeting.
Right.
Does that also include? Anything for the new trails or anything in there? Does that include that?
That would be.
Yeah.
Or so that's under.
That would be under current stuff.
Cause it's being built out.
Okay.
This is just what I paid to maintain what, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we actually have a line out in our budget which will go over to, say, for trails maintenance as well, or sales stuff will probably be covered under that cause maintenance.
Okay.
Cause that's our.
Yeah, I don't see our road crew going up in there, no, yeah.
They could.
Yeah, but, but the, the, the major ones, you know, like this, this part of the valley trail, crosstown, which. Equipment can get in on.
Yep.
Okay. Other questions from, uh, of the budget, so. I'm looking at what we haven't spent much money.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we've been spending a lot on guard rail and we'll, we'll.
And you wanted to stockpile some more full birds.
Yes.
Yes.
The Wyndham County tax, why?
That's what I was talking about before. I'm sure it's based on population. And our census, isn't it, Jeanette? Wyndham County tax. It's like a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. It's still around the courts.
Okay, I just didn't get why.
It's basically, well, it, it went up because of the census.
Yes. Then why would it be like, like eighty five, one twenty, eighty five, one thirty?
Web page?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Two on here, so. It's on the second.
Yeah.
It's one, two, seven, fourteen, seventy four.
Yes.
Well, so, this is what the situation, we had budgeted eighty five. The census probably came in and we got charged more and we hadn't budgeted enough, cause this is, you know what I mean, so.
Budget and natural.
Right, alright, so we need to budget more.
We're now matching our budget to what we've experienced in the last couple of years.
Right, so we're gonna be, and let me look that up right now. They probably, did they charge us in installment payments or two payments? Wyndham County tax?
The county tax.
Yeah, I have no idea. I'm gonna look it up.
Twice a year, but I'm not.
Seven, fourteen.
Jeanette, do we need to budget for that generator?
The generator is at the.
But I was just looking at the highways or generator maintenance.
So we paid nothing this year, year to date, so they haven't filled us yet. So we're gonna get, but this, that's what happened here, I guarantee you, Eric, it's the census caught up with us. And the courts are busy, right? Alright.
The planning, the planning commission legal fee, hundred thousand.
That's to rewrite.
And that's something that we're looking into writing. Looking for a ramp, that's what might, we can't count on it, but that might come.
Wow, I just saw.
The bylaw?
It, it's like this.
Yeah, maybe there's lots of pictures.
No, there's a lot, lot, lot of footnote and correction, I, I mean, every page is just.
It shows all the evidence.
Everything, it's crazy.
Our son's gonna have a fair amount of that, but hopefully.
The town.
Was right. We're not talking about when we get to our bylaw update, because that thing hasn't been touched since twenty thirteen and the world's has changed.
Yeah.
Considerably.
Yeah.
We have pages.
Yes. Uh, I just wanna check another line item here. What else?
I was curious why the fees and dues for the fire department, you know, so much. Yeah.
We're spending a lot more on training.
Fees and dues, fees and dues, that's not, that's not training. Training's a different line item.
And we really haven't talked about, um, wages, which we do need to really talk about. Everything with what has been proposed. We haven't really had a discussion. I don't know.
Well, most of them. That's for. Oh, right.
I think that, I, I personally believe that administrations should all be the same.
We're gonna do three percent. Do a cross.
That's my field, but I'm open to others.
I know, I agree.
Respectives.
I agree.
Admin free. Mike, your new, uh, office manager, what was the, um. What? What was the increase specifically?
It was the same as everything.
I know last year we did, all administrative people got the same on that. Do you have any thoughts on, were you going to do a probationary increase after?
No, um, maybe because when we. When we hired her, it was at a higher rate than we found because of her experience and because she was starting. Later because she needed less training, um, so it balanced out and actually saved us in the budget to pay her more upfront.
Okay.
We didn't feel like a probationary, it was necessary with her, so we wanted to get her where she wanted to be to start, especially since we're saving. With that said, the only thing that I would throw out there with, um. With her position and some of the proposals we've made already, um, specifically. Mainly, the, the alarm ordinance that she's taking over, um, she will be writing municipal. Tickets on that. She already has the municipal ticket officer number, um, which is creating revenue that we have seen in the past and she's. You know, pretty much spearheaded that whole thing, taking that over. Tracking the large, writing municipal tickets, making sure that's money's coming in the way it's supposed to.
Sarah.
Can we pay her for that if we pay her taxes?
I don't think we want to get into that.
Checking.
Other thoughts?
Wish you could have that for the fire department as well.
I wish we could have that for everybody. No, I'm serious. I wish we could do it for everybody, but. Sarah, what, with our small cuts, Jeanette, what, how much our increase now? Six something?
The overall budget?
Yeah.
It's still at six.
What's the overall?
No, the overall, the bottom line.
I was still at eleven percent.
Are we still at eleven?
Which. I didn't, I didn't change, but the overall budget is at six percent.
Sarah.
Dude, looking at the appropriations. Was SASH? The group that's no longer supporting.
No, it's visiting nurse.
Oh, visiting nurse and they're gone.
No, we need to take them out.
Yeah, so that shouldn't be on there, right?
We're gonna take them out, cause we know, I don't wanna pay them this year either.
They haven't, they haven't requested any.
No, no.
That should come out.
We could catch Sarah.
Little tiny number, but the Southern Vermont Terrificity Riding Center, I don't know if they're still operating. At a Brookside Stables. Well, Amber resigned and I don't know if the program continued without her or if it just. Cause the rotary was giving them money and there was a, we had an issue. So I just don't know. I mean, it's a, it's a very small amount of money, but we should just make sure that that organization is still operating.
Have they, we. Request, have they requested funds for this issue?
No, we have not requested it so far. But they did, they know who paid them last year.
Out of the appropriations that we have, are there any that we still haven't heard from?
So we getting culverts out of them? Are we going to be getting culverts out of the? When they're digging on the mountain?
No, they're, they're replacing them for free. They're not buying culverts. We have to provide the culvert. That's why.
You're stuck.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was.
They, they'll, they'll, they'll do the work and, and, and supply the gravel. We provide it.
Still is a savings.
Still, oh, yeah.
Yeah, still, oh, I thought they were good.
No.
Okay, so we're taking out the visiting nurse, since they're not servicing our county anymore.
I can look into the other one.
Okay.
Riding center. I just, I did bring that ball around, but I'm pretty sure everyone else knows requested the same.
Or the, the fire departments of the libraries of, yes. Yes.
Did the library, it said December twelfth finalized, did they send you a finalized budget?
Alright, so we kinda got everybody's attention about talking about money and then, uh, we kinda looked. Yes, Tavi.
No, I just, um, my budget did go up for the software and I wanted to make sure that.
From what you presented the last time?
No, no, from what was presented, I just, the increase is in here. Oh, yes, okay, that's what you did. And I was able to negotiate some savings in the contract and the select board I want to. Sign that. I have saved money this year for initiating this and then. The larger model will be next to the budget, but I was able to get her to knock off two grand. So, little bits, but it's always helpful, but I just wanna.
Well, we're incorporating the, the library now. But we will be doing the library as part of the town audit.
Gotcha. Gotcha, gotcha.
Do you, how hard would it be to put? All the administration in this building at four and, and tell us how much that goes up? Linda?
I just have, when you say administration, what does that actually include?
Everybody who works in this building.
The whole building is considered an expansion?
I, I think so. Am I?
I just never, if you look at page one of.
Never knew.
Yeah, this is, this is here, uh, right here.
So when it shows up in the town report?
It's not economic development, they're separate, so it's not Shannon and, and, but we typically.
Everybody, gotcha.
Because they have their own budget. Yes, Mike.
Well, she does that calculation for what it's worth, I did a quick one on my admin. A change from the five I proposed down to three would be an overall budget savings of less than a thousand dollars. Which again, the, the goal of our, uh, alarm ordinance is to get everybody in compliance, but I'm doing quick revenues from that, we'll probably.
And we appreciate the initiative, that, that is obviously something that needs to be reined in too.
The, the alarm ordinance will be working together because I have a whole lot of E nine-one-one issues that I'm going to be addressing, so I want to make sure that, if somebody calls and you alarm and you go out, they're giving you the right address.
That's part of the, um, application, just making sure that they have.
To verify it and make sure that they're here in line.
And guess that's visible from the street.
And that it's, some of these E nine-one-ones are going to be changing, so.
It'll be on them and we, we will be either on our own or with you, making sure we're.
Sounds perfect.
And I, 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 I really would like to try to do something more for everybody in the administrative capacity in the office, because last year they got three percent and, and police and highway got more. And police and highway are, um, potentially going to get more again this year, so I think that it's, if we can do something, granted, the numbers are bad this year, but I'd like to see what it looks like. So, yes.
I guess I just want to put out a word of caution, just because when the sales study comes out, I mean, I know a lot of this is based on our random listeners, and until the reappraisal, when things even have a little more, not so much, increase, I'm not gonna know on that, but.
I, I, I understand, I just, I, I, I under, but that still is, it is, and this, the school side of things is gonna just complicate, it's gonna be very bad. But I, I do think that, you know, we value all of our employees, and so I'd like to see what we can do to make, I just want to see the numbers. Eric?
We appreciate anything you guys can do for us, obviously, it's, you know, we, we appreciate working here and, anything you can provide us for a raise, uh, I just, from a personal standpoint, I know, you know, cost of living is, is not, doesn't seem to be keeping up with, with what, you know, it, it's, it's getting really tough and, uh, you know, in Brattle Row, right now, their administration is asking for like twelve to sixteen percent basis or something like that, to keep up with cost of living, so we appreciate anything you guys can do.
Hey, but you can buy gas for two ninety-nine at Fabian's.
Yes.
Which is the best gas around here anywhere.
That's.
Yep, Mike.
Has anyone actually wrote the, uh, COLA number this year, what that is?
I haven't, and usually that's something we ask Marco, but Marco couldn't be here today. We'll, we're gonna have another meeting, so this is not, you know, we're obviously not voting, we're, we're discussing today. I'm sure the COLA number is more than three and more than four.
Um, it looks like so it went from zero to one percent, the subtotal payroll for the admin.
Okay, and so what number, what kind of number is that now, Jeanette, we went to four?
Multiple screens here.
Sorry.
No, that's right, so we've got.
Right now, is it five thirty-two something?
Uh, right, so it'd be five thirty-four, six thirteen, sixty-two.
What are people thinking about that?
Where are you getting?
Right, this number right here.
Will be what?
Five.
Five, three, four, three, four, six, one, three, six, two.
So that's.
If everything is working in this spreadsheet, sounds.
Can, to, what's the rest of the board?
Less than two thousand dollars.
I know.
Yeah, no.
So let's try five.
Well, that would be. That would be thirty-six hundred. If we went to five, it'd be thirty-seven hundred.
That doesn't seem right, Jeanette. Well.
But that doesn't take into, or does that take into account, does that change the, um, cost for the beamers and any of that stuff, or is that straight, or if we raise salaries, does it only raise salaries, what does it?
I, I, I'm pretty sure they've got it built so that if you go up a percentage, all that other stuff is, is interconnected, like as a regular Excel spreadsheet would be.
Compensation spreadsheet, so I've changed all of them to four percent and three percent, and that should carry over into the other.
So, let's make sure that those numbers are right and, and, uh, send it back out to the board, uh, Marco will be in on Monday.
Yes.
Yeah, so you guys just make sure it's right and then we'll look at it again, has anybody else for that?
Sure.
Um, and so obviously, Eric, whatever we do for, for the town employees here, the economic development department, in my mind, also would carry over, if we go with four, if we go with five, whatever we go with, you guys should put it in your budget as well.
So the budget we're presenting you on Tuesday has our number in it, when you guys make your decision, you mentioned our budget.
And you've got three percent plus a dollar. And what's your comments on that? I'll get from you in a moment.
What do you mean?
So would you, I mean, are you feeling still okay with a dollar plus three percent?
Yes.
Okay. Mike?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I did a math on that and I like this proposal too. Yeah. We were from PD.
Oh, one, a dollar plus three.
I thought you were going five.
I was.
But it's better. Well, let's all go down to zero, okay?
Just throwing it out there, I, I really like Travis's math. And you will not be opposed to his math.
Thank you for giving us your opinion on that. What else? Anybody else have anything else they wanted to say today?
So, do we have another date in mind for another budget meeting?
We probably should have another date in mind, or.
Is it appropriate to bring up here or to, are you interested in buildings and what happens, or is that strictly right to the board?
Well, we just had a capital building discussion that lasted about forty-five minutes. Yeah. Yeah.
Missing.
Yeah, so if you have, um, Jeanette brought in some ideas and then Travis, I mean, so. So I don't really want to go back and revisit it today, but if you have something more that you want, I would say take it to Jeanette and then she can eat, if he's more information, she can bring it to Travis too.
Were you having a suggestion or question?
Uh, a suggestion, real sort of.
So.
Yeah. Concerned.
So, and you haven't raised that until now?
I wasn't sure who it goes to.
Well, I would tell you, anytime you have a question, send it to Jeanette, because that's how it gets to the board too. Um, okay, so it's gonna get pretty dicey here, we need to have the budget approved on the, but at.
January twelfth, I thought it was, at the town report.
Okay, so we need social security with three point two. Last year was eight.
So I will get, yeah, I will get. She just checked through, COLA was three point two, yes, so, but last year, but last year was eight, so.
Well, and that's, but that's the COLA for social security, I'm having a hard time finding just.
I think it hasn't come out yet.
Yeah.
But I mean, there, like, there's nowhere in my search that's saying. In the United States, and it's just saying, here's the social security adjustment.
Okay, so we're gonna meet on the second for our regular next, and we're, we're meeting Tuesday night. Then we're also meeting on the second for our first meeting of January, and we need to have the budget approved for the twelfth. Is that what I'm hearing, Jeanette, because?
Well, Andy had requested for.
Reports.
Reports and budgets, um, department reports due by the twelfth.
Of January?
Yeah, petitions are not, the town meeting aren't due until the nineteenth, so.
I think he's trying to pull the town report together too.
Yes.
Do, uh, next week or later though. And the following week is rough for a lot of people who. It's Christmas, it's the holiday week and everybody's, uh, a lot of people are working really hard and roads are soon. So maybe the first week of January, how about, oh, and Dan, you're not gonna be here, how about that Friday the fifth that we curved out for another potential thing? I know you do. But.
Thursday.
It, it should be a small, a shorter meeting, that's eight hours.
That Thursday instead, so Dan can be here or?
Thursday the fourth? Yeah. Uh, at like three, three thirty, four? Okay. What do you think, Jeanette?
I'd say three.
Three.
So three on the fourth, Joe, Joe, are you available?
I'm available at three thirty.
Three thirty, three thirty on the fourth. We'll hopefully.
I can try for three o'clock, if you want to start at three o'clock, but I may not be there till three thirty.
I think we want to have you here in person and smiling and offering your sage advice.
Fifty. Yeah, if you want me there in person, I don't get out of work until three thirty, so I won't be able to be there till four, on January fourth.
Oh. Okay.
Winter, I'm in winter mode, I work pretty much every day from eight till three thirty on the slopes.
Um, Jeanette, I know you don't want to be here to do it, but I think we'd like to have Joe. At four. At four.
Four.
Four. Four on the one. Okay, good. So, back to the agenda. And so we didn't have warrants on here, so we'll just.
No, but they are there if you want to look at.
Alright. Anything else? Hearing nothing more, like during the meeting at three forty-six, forty-seven P M, thank you all.